Tonight's planning commission meeting to order. We do have a. And our first item on the agenda. I'd like the motion to approve of that. The only item I would be opposed to change. They call it. There's a couple of issues and some items to discuss further. I get a proposal. So we're going to get a motion. Can you motion to judge the agenda?
I'm. That you adjust the agenda to. Item five to the next.
Seven seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is approved in minutes of the June seventeenth meeting. Issues, if not, can I get a motion for approval? I'll make a motion of the. June seventeenth meeting approved. Every. Back. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are going to review tonight. Mr. Webb is going to explain to us. About zoning ordinance for the floodplain management regulation, Article eleven. The zoning ordinance. Webb?
Yes. Thank you. Um. So floodplain ordinance, there's sort of three parts. Uh, that is the actual ordinance itself, which in Madison is in design ordinance. Sometimes in some communities, it's a standalone ordinance, but Madison. That's at least half the communities, that's where the floodplain ordinance is. And so to amend it, we have a process or. Ordinance. Uh, so you have the actual ordinance itself. You have the study. It's called FIS. I did put that online. And then you have the actual, kind of what rubber meets the road is the actual mapping. Floodplain map. And if you read the report, it has, I think, expanded on a new study that was completed. Our old map is two thousand seven. Uh, somewhere around that time. So this floodplain map does expand. Uh, floodplain area, floodplain areas, identify floodplain areas through the FIS. Uh, we have about forty policies in Madison, which is, I don't know. I don't know, awful much. But there are some, I guess, the only question I always had, we don't know the answers. How many people, maybe that weren't in the floodplain? I'm talking about structure, meaning well, out in the floodplain. Don't really know that. I would suspect there might be a couple. Potentially not. It's a lot of. It did send letters out. About eighteen hundred, five hundred, few months ago. Um. Basically, the changes, and I've said this in the report, are pretty performant. Just with the state. Water notice put in design ordinance. It's not being groundbreaking. You can still build in a floodplain. Our building official is clear about this. You just have to follow the specific construction regulations for floodplain construction. So we're not. In any way saying you can't build floodplain. It's just as, as was before, we have to follow those construction. Practices as required by the floodplain ordinance of the building official. Any questions? I know, I know this is a public hearing. So I just want to, you know, again, this is, you know, this is for the public. We. My commission has always allowed people to kind of treat these workshops as hearings. That's great, but just, you know, far as this goes, I don't think people here for floodplain. So I guess, uh, but if there are any questions for me as far as this. Jamie and I have talked about it for months now. It does need to be adopted before September in order to participate in this flood insurance program. So we don't have a lot of choice. Uh, any questions?
Any questions, questions from the planning commission?
Look, and I got one. Uh, now that you have a piece of property, it could have been A, C, one, whatever it could have been. Now that piece of property is in floodplain, does that do anything to the tax base of that property?
Do you know? That's a good question. If you. From a, a market standpoint, yes. And the, the, the value is supposed to be based on market value. So if your house was not in the floodplain, now it is, I would. I, I, that's a good, good question. Right, but I would say if we're basing our taxes on market value, we formally train as a praiser. It's different, yes. No question.
Any else?
Yes, I have one question. Mr. Webb, how much interest, I know this is a public hearing, but how much interest have you had on this? I mean, it's been a question out of, uh, months ago. We've got a lot of calls. Folks will basically want to know, well, you know, has changed and what's going on? Has it moved up to, you know, a couple of my half now? The twenty or thirty people that I talk to are known as very minor changes. In their old map. That. But I think if you, if you look online at G S and compare it to U C, that this expanded. So maybe the twenty or thirty people I talked to, just, that's just the way it was, but I do believe that it's an expansion. You know, you, you can challenge that, but, um. It's a, uh, it's a lengthy, complicated process. In expensive.
Anybody else?
Does the vote will be August fifth and can be challenged? Is that what you're saying?
What's that?
The votes will be August fifth and.
Right, it isn't, this is just a review of what we're gonna, this whole. Meeting is just to review what we're gonna actually vote on, on August fifth. So it's like lots of work session. I mean, again, welcome to have comments on these items, but there will be no vote tonight as far as either of these items.
Anybody else in the audience have a comment on the floodplain ordinance? If not, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Uh, the people outside, you want to come on in, sit down? It's on there. All right.
Um, like all board supervisors portion to order, just so that we can listen in. Got a comment where we can, we don't have a formal agenda, but we could always work off. Planning commission, turning back that we're just planning. Just go to a grid. Session. Um. Player of the day.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to adopt the agenda as presented.
For debate, it's likely further discussion. And then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it was the same as aye, it might affect you.
Right. Would y'all like, would y'all like to come in and find a seat or just stay out there, whatever? Okay. Next. Next item on the agenda tonight. Case number SU dash zero seven dash two zero, please. Let's keep order in the audience, thank you. Ready? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is case number SU zero seven dash two zero dash fourteen. It's a special use permit request by Crystalus LLC for an event venue. Uh, we have read this item a couple of times in meetings, so I'm not going to go through the whole thing. I think everybody here is probably familiar with that. Mr. Webb, do you have anything to add? What we, what we already know?
So. Uh. General observation, I've been working in this field quite a long time. Even subtle land use changes. And reckless, sometimes in. You change something in someone's backyard, it's always emotional. And it's no large changes. More. There's a kind of sort of change at this point. Well, that's opposed. That has many layers of, of oversight. And I've been in touch with a lot of, of folks in that area in Alton County, kind of explaining the process and. You know, how, how Madison, you know, talks about joint process and different things, uh, how the process is here in Madison. In the day, this is a citizen-led process. Nine folks here are. It's like the folks who live out, they're in the audience, trying to use their best judgment, uh, citizen planners. And I think it's my job to try to help map this process. Uh, this particular. Venue, the process was adopted a little over a year ago. Many of you might have been here. Uh, and we've had a couple of small, a couple of changes to the ordinance since then. We now refer to it as the event venue. So it did venue, will resort, one of the same. Uh, the, the first thing that I do is plan or, uh. Okay, I, I will talk, we don't have, we don't have a microphone, so I will talk that, okay?
Thank you.
So the, the first thing I look at in evaluating this is sort of the, what we call the comprehensive plan, which in. Which in Madison was adopted in twenty eighteen. In a plan, usually, I wasn't here for this, but it's. It's not really good technology, so per, hello, okay.
Much better.
Okay, perfect. So in twenty eighteen, this, this cop plan was, was completed in Madison. And every county municipality is required to have a cop plan and addresses a whole range of issues from housing, development areas, economic development. And one of the broad sort of, in, in these cop plans, they really, what I would call are ten thousand, you know, feet look at things. I mean, I've never seen a comprehensive plan where it said, we don't want some sort of economic development. Um, so at ten thousand feet, I think this particular proposal obviously is something that I would look at and say, well, this is something that at least during the comprehensive plan process, the citizens have, have expressed an interest in this sort of tourist-type industries. Again, ten thousand feet, but when you hit the ground level, uh, the concept becomes a reality. And you're in, you're always in someone's neighborhood, and that's when it becomes emotional and, 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 you know, uh. The process is, is something that we have to trust and follow. Uh, regarding tourism, I, I think, you know, we, we pretty much consider tourism to be a clean industry. Uh, but that does not mean it does not have peril. Uh, and I know a lot of letters and people have pointed out the noils, noise, uh, traffic, for instance, noise, um, environmental concerns. As many of you know, uh, the last few years, the state has what I would call liberalized land use, uh, in, in the, uh, in the state. We know about the breweries and vineyard exemptions in many places. Uh, you know, uh, there are, uh, enterprises that before would have, would have probably gone through some pretty brutal special use permits process that are now considered to be by right. Uh, we've got several here in, in Madison. Uh, and you can go to Page, you can go to Culpeper, and many of these operate just by getting building permits. Um, it, and I, I do find the state code to be a little vague, and I do think it's right for some legal challenges, as we understand, there are some going on right now. Um, but.
But they must be smaller.
Yeah, right, let me finish them real quick. Excuse, I, I'll do a Q and A, it's okay. So. Yeah, and it is small, yeah, sure, sure, sure. I mean. Please restrain yourself, thank you. But the, uh, the, the. The good thing about the S, this special use permit condition, is that it really does give the community, planners, the board, a, a broad latitude to, to place conditions, to take citizen feedback to their concerns, place it in their permit, put performance objectives. Uh, it can even be limited to the actual, the special use permit can be limited to the applicant themselves. Uh, so it, it really does give us a, a lot of latitude. And the process that I've been kind of working with, with Ms. Miller, is these are often sort of negotiations. We, we go back and forth, hey, this is what I'm hearing, this is what your concerns are, how can you address this? This is what the boards have initiatives with the planning commission, this is what I'm hearing from your neighbors. So the, the, the hope is, is to, if you think the broad concept is something that is, is, is acceptable, then try to work this down into a, a special use permit that hopefully everyone's happy with. And I know that's sometimes in this business is always, uh, it's hard to achieve, but at least at the end of the day, I'd hope that the citizens in the area, again, if this were to be approved, I can at least say, this is something that's predictable, we, we know what's going to happen over there, we know what time they're supposed to shut off, we get an idea what kind of traffic surge you're talking about. So, you know, for the last two months, this is really all I've thought about. Uh, so, um, I, I really am happy to answer any questions anyone might have. So one note I will make on the actual ad, which came from the submission. Uh, Barbara had told me that we have a narrative that says sixty thousand square feet of, of, of structures, permanent and temporary structures. Uh, she says that this is larger than really what she anticipates. Um. Okay, I mean, it's always better to go, it's, it's always better to go down than go up. So I, I did find that number from looking at the site plan to be a little bit, you know, I'm kind of measuring in my head, you know, thinking, that looks like more than, not, not quite sixty thousand square feet. So what we're doing now, and what I hope to do is the next week, I've talked to Ms. Miller about this, is to, after tonight, and with the comments we hear, is to work this conditions, uh, into something that is the definitive final sort of condition. That, that something that, there might be some things that the board says, we, we're just going to, you know, this is just a, you know, non-negotiable, we need this, but there might be some room that we can sort of compromise. So the, the few things that I will just go over, and this is in, of my comments, the last condition letter, which is six thirty, I think, and if you take some notes, I think there's been questions on the transferability. Uh, I will just make a comment that. That sometimes can cause issues, um, of a underwriting, and if you, you know, if you are, uh, you know, working with lenders, that's not necessarily the county's concern, but if you support this project, that could be an issue. I, I will point out that non-transferability sometimes is a sort of a, a, a no-go for third parties that might be interested in financing or being involved. Um. I've also made a point that I want to, you know, kind of a clear indication that what's submitted on the site plan. Uh, which is six of nine submitted, is the, is the, is the condition is that this is what it will be. There can be some minor deviations, you know, you get in there, bounce a rock, and you have to move a building ten, fifteen feet. But basically, what's being approved, regardless who, who carries the project forward, this is what they're going to be tied to. And that really kind of goes for all the conditions. Uh, I, I also have a little bit of, we have forty-one total lodging units, and you have two hundred and thirty people, and I have mentioned this to Ms. Miller, that's five, somewhere around five and a half per unit. Those are some pretty large units, those are largest, uh, you know, could be, you know, three, four bedroom house. I, I don't know if, 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 if that's something that's, that's, um. I mean, you could build modular units that large, but I just think there's a little bit disconnect between the actual occupancy, uh, and the number of units. Um. I had also made a comment about, I think Barbara had said that golf carts, electric only would be the, the mode of sort of movement around the actual site. Um. And as far as the events, this is where it gets, you know, uh, this is where I believe we really have to focus a lot of attention. Um. Trying to delineate between, uh, you know, we have the private events. And we all know private wedding venues and, and, and event centers and, and, uh, what I, you know, common interest groups, hobby groups that might come. I say the Border Collie Association of Virginia might want to come there, just using that as an example. So those private events in, in, it's sort of my sort of research tend to be smaller. I don't have a biggest concern with the private events. So I went and looked at other communities that sort of have dealt with this issue, and I think it was a, maybe a community in California, but I like the idea of doing a minor in major. Um, and I won't go into, you know, you can actually, you know, you can, you can read these, I think most folks have, but my thought is if, if you're having something at, uh, five o'clock on a Friday, uh, that's maybe open to the public, and I just think about ball top, you have music. I don't know, maybe, uh, you know, maybe seventy-five, eighty people come. That's sort of, to me, the spirit of a, a minor event. For a major event, um, we have limited to six in, in, a year. And to me, the really big thing about a, a major event, event is if you're going to have, you know, the, again, just sort of trying to grab a number, seven fifty or more, which is a pretty large event. I mean, I, I, I'm not sure what Graves' attendance are for some of their events, but to me, that's a fairly large event, and it might not be achieved, but if there is an event that maybe you're going to have a, a concert or something, or something that's open to the public. Um, I, I sort of put a provision in there where I thought, I call it the anti-lock-in provision, if people come here with Nelson County and the large festival, if you're going to have something that's ticketed, and you, you know, you're issuing more than two thousand, then you've got to come to the board for a special approval. So six major events a year, and again, that sort of follows Graves', uh, model, which is six. And I, I like to use Graves' a little bit, and I did do a little bit of analysis today. So Graves is on a, this is just from their website, I just kind of took it, I just, for, for example, eleven hundred acres. Uh, now, their residential lodging structure, I counted sixteen. Two of which, one has twenty-two rooms. And I think another one has forty rooms, and then there are fourteen cabins. I put two and a half per bedroom. Could have someone on a fold-out cot or something like that. I'm estimating that Graves can probably have two and thirty to two and fifty people on site any given time. And it's just, they're going, what's for, you know, what's on, out there available publicly? It's, it's a little different, and I, I made this point, Graves has been doing this since the early sixties. I don't know if we even had a building official back then. Um, probably didn't. If you move Sierra, you know Graves is there. Okay, this is something that's being introduced. Therefore, I really believe, I guess my final statement is, it really needs to be something that is thought out incrementally, with really clear conditions, that ultimately the planning commission and the boarders are, are happy with, as representatives of you. And that hopefully Barbara, Ms. Miller can live with as well. So. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Or the, the, let me explain to y'all exactly how the process works in the meeting, because there seems to be some confusion. Okay, after Mr. Webb finishes, the planning commission has the opportunity to ask questions. After that, I will ask for people in the audience that wish to make comments, the planning commission again, and the board of supervisors, if they so desire, will ask the person doing the speaking the question. And between that, there will not be any discussion or questions asked of the person doing the speaking. Uh, if you have something that's unclear, you can clear that up during your presentation, or when the board of supervisors does their thing. And there will be another opportunity at, at, when we do the, when the board and the planning commission meets in a joint meeting on August the fifth, I think it is, to, to make additional comments and ask questions. But tonight, we are going to have a very orderly process. Uh, and the way it works, as I just explained, is that the planning commission will first ask Mr. Webb any questions that they so desire. If they have no question, I will go to the audience and ask for anyone that wants to make the comment. You will have three minutes to stand up at the podium and identify yourself and address and make your comments. Uh, we have a timer over here, and after the timer goes off, you have thirty seconds to wrap it up. If we do not do that, we have a lot of people here tonight, and we will be here until twelve o'clock tonight, listening to everyone make their comments. Do we, everybody understand, in between, the person doing the speaking from the audience will address the planning commission and the board of supervisors, not other members in the audience. And there will be no questions from the audience at that time. All right? Any questions from the planning commission or the board of supervisors from Mr. Webb?
Yes, sir. Peter, please.
Like, and on the subject of transferability. Uh, reading your write-up, uh, hearing your comments, would suggest that there are really only two, one is run each the, the special use permit runs with the land. And for alternative, it runs with the app. Ceasees. Yeah. I wonder if there is a, a hybrid. That is to say, the special use permit would run with the land, and I certainly recognize, standpoint of finance, so that's. But if a new operator of events, this new one, were to come in. They might have an entirely different approach to this property that should be held. My, my suggestion is that we agree to have the special use permit. But require a new conditions, but from any purchaser of the property. I don't, thinking about it, I don't know any legal bar to that. I mean. They, they suggest that there is a bar, but I think that's.
Yeah, well, just to be clear, if someone did, it's a good.
Excuse me, just, Mr. Webb, just a second. Anyone out there outside that would like to come in? I'll ask again, we have seats in here, if anyone out there would like to come in and sit down.
If someone can sit here too. I, I, I will say, to be clear, if this was to be transferred, they would be.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
It would be bound to the conditions that were approved by the board. So it would be transferable, but they just couldn't say, well, you know, we want to do sixty cabins, and so they would have to come back, have this public hearing all over again. So they would inherit what was approved, um, and nothing different. Uh, now, as far as a hybrid, Sean, I don't, I, I didn't quite totally un- uh, understand what the hybrid approach would be, but, um, I mean.
The hybrid part would be, let's say, S U T runs with the mayor, but the conditions, but it's not run with the S U T. That's new conditions, but would be required, uh, to account for whatever new approach, uh, the transferee.
But the transferee had a new approach, then they would just have to come back through this process. You know, you know, so if they say, look, you know, we want to change this, then I would say, okay, put it in the paper, what do you want to change? We move forward. Uh, I mean, we could make a statement to that, to that effect, but they would, uh, but, yeah, I, I, um. Just thinking right here, I'm, I'm having a hard time finding a middle ground. If they want to change anything of substance, they will need to come back to, to the board.
Australia?
I'd like to ask the county attorney something. Tom, if, when we make the, if a motion is made, and when the motion is made for this, if this is approved, and it's made to approve, part of that motion could be that this application, if it is transferred to someone else, could only be done, what's in the application now, and anything new would have to come back and from this board. That's be part of the motion. That would take care of the problem.
Well. Would it, would it have to be part of the motion, or is that standard practice that they would have to come back anyhow?
They would, typically, if anybody is seeing the scope of the special use permit, they are reapplying the special use permit.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Let me go a little further, it might give some, leave the bars.
Let me go a little further, because you might give some, leave the bars. Ms. Miller has described to us what seems to be a plan of action that focuses on agriculture, farming, very, very, learning about agriculture, and that sort of thing, very consistent with Madison purchasers, and the next thing was musical. That would be an entirely different level of fish than Ms. Miller. That's why I say, I think we ought to explore the possibility of having the question run with the land, but not the conditions separate that.
Thank you.
I'm having, I'm just having, I'm about to talk to Sean about, I'm just having a hard time with, with that. And again, I think it's a fine question, I just, the S U P is the conditions, in my opinion, I mean, that is the S U P, all your conditions.
In that regard, I tend to agree with Mr. Webb. Mr. Webb, you want to send the, those ones to Taylor.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Mr. Carpenter?
A quick, uh, I'm asking a question. You were expressing some concern about this versus about, how many of these are planting sites and camps?
Yeah, how many, and the question is, how many are lamping sites, which is, you know, camp-type sites, and how many are sort of like regular cabins?
I got four people there.
I, I think we have about 14, 15 lamping sites, is that, is that what I mean?
No, there's more lamping sites than there are cabins, there's much fewer cabins.
Oh, okay. Look at this, you look at the site, and that.
Well, my point is, by understanding a lamping site, a cabin might typically have lots of things, whereas a, a lodge, well, that, that might account for some problems, people, right?
Every structure will have to be approved by the building official, even lamping site, so, and it will have an occupancy. And I've talked, I've talked to Mr. Wilkes about this, and we've had a long conversation about, and with the Millers here, so they understand that it's going to, whatever they propose, have to talk to them, if they don't already have the Virginia Bill, you know, for a building code approval, will have to get plans, and Jamie has to say, yes, this needs done.
Yeah, my point was that that comes to some of the, the, the.
It can be done, absolutely. I mean, we, of course, Graves has two large structures, but outside of those two structures, they're, they're pretty much capping, you know, single-family cabins.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Mr. Webb?
Like, in your, in your presentation, you really didn't address what I think is the hardest, that's the noise part.
Yeah, I said, I'll, I'll talk about noise, traffic, and environmental concerns. I mean, the, the noise, to me, I would approach it as a clear cutoff time, I'm not a, and people mentioned that we don't have a noise ordinance, well, this is the time we can develop one for this permit. And a lot of communities don't, I mean, a lot of communities don't, I mean, it's, it's not uncommon. I think the decimals kind of go off-site to measure decimals, I just think you have a clear cutoff time, and I think I made a recommendation, that there could be some, some flexibility, and maybe it cuts off earlier, Monday through Thursday, maybe on Friday and Saturday it goes a little later. So that's something that we can talk about tonight and the next, next week, coming weeks. Traffic, you know, I did do the traffic count, I looked at the traffic counts, I talked to assistant resident engineer, Mr. Moore today, because since he first looked at the project, there has been potentially increase of, of overnight guest. He still has the same position that at the site plan, when that comes in, they will, you know, they might, they very well might want to see an overall site traffic impact analysis study, where you have an engineer and look at the total build-out and analyze what would be the traffic to and from this type of event. Now, traffic engineering is a little bit of a call of duty in it, it's, 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 it's not always exact, it's pretty good, you know, we have a lot of traffic counts, and they know what tourism, what lodges that do traffic studies generate, but his feeling at the, you know, at the final analysis, the only off-site improvements will be right there at the intersection, you know, at some point, a left turn lane or right turn lane. There's really going to be no other improvements outside of that. So we need a traffic impact analysis when we basically know this is, this is what's pretty much going to be needed, that's turn lanes. But we did have that conversation today, and he clearly told me that 231 is at 1,440 trips a day compared to some other surrounding roads, it, it does, you know, it is a, you know, Orange Road, it's on my, it's in the, in the packet, but Orange Road, similar design, site, you know, similar width, everything, and it has several thousand, I, I get it off the top of my head, but there are several thousand more trips on Orange Road, just for example. So, again, just from an engineering perspective, it's, 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 it's definitely probably one of the better spots, I mean, existing conditions of the road, environmental concerns, septic, well, that, that is a, you know, a health department function, I estimate it, based on what I've saw, you, you know, you might need a dozen septic systems out there. These are all, have to be design bond engineer approved by the health department, you know, the capacity, you know, is one going to serve, and the size of your buildings are going to, your, your lodging, your buildings are going to dictate the size of the septic systems, I mean, you, you could be lucky, half a million dollars in septic systems, I mean, it's, it's no question. Erosion sediment, those are functions of the county, that if it's over a certain size, when we get the site plan, that'll be farmed out to D E Q for stormwater, and the erosion sediment plans, which are for construction. So when you're construction, you have to have erosion seven plan, but the post is a stormwater plan, there's a high level of review of that, and we know that, you know, from other projects. So this is the big picture for the project, but, and the good news is, is that with having to come back with a site plan, there are going to be a lot of opportunities to see what kind of performance we have going on, and how, you know, certain things are being met. And you get, if it's approved, you get ample more opportunities to, to analyze this project for all three, you know, noise, traffic, environmental concerns. But as far as the noise, that's what you're for, I mean, I, I sort of like the idea of a, a limit, maybe, and you could even, you could even say certain times of year, you can do it, you know, you can have later, whatever that time may be, is it 11 o'clock? I don't know, but during certain months of the year, you can go a little later, but not, you know, so there's, there's several ways in which this could be approached.
Thank you, any more questions from the planning commission? I would just like to mention that we have received numerous letters, or several letters from the public on this issue, I will not read each one of them into the record tonight, but we do have the letters, and all the members of the planning commission have those letters, and we are reviewing them and taking it to heart, and all the comments that have been submitted. If there are no more questions from the planning commission, I'm going to go to the office, Mr. Go, go to the audience, Mr. Graves, would you like to have something to say? I see you've got something there in your hand.
It's going to be.
You're, you're Mr. Jimmy Graves, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It, sound is going to be depending on the night times, you got some nights that it, the sound is going to travel, it's going to travel distance, then other nights, you've got to, you got to keep it down, and we've tried to keep hours down, at least under 11, and then try to even come, on some nights, we try to come down under 10, 10 o'clock at night, because it, it will travel, and you will have people that will call and complain, because it, it can travel with us, it's coming out of the mountain, so it's going to bounce off, and it's going to come further down. And so you're going to have that, and, and then it depends on what you're going to do, it's like when we have the different festivals, then you're going to have traffic. And when you get off of 231 onto 670, and I try to divert the traffic to go two different ways, I try to go on 600, I try to go 670, bring it in at the track pond and bring it in at the front, so that way we can get the cars off the road.
Okay, Mr. Graves is the owner and operator of the Graves Mountain Lodge, is that correct?
That's correct.
So he, and they have very large events up there, so he is very familiar with a lot of things that will be discussed here tonight.
If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any question?
And, I mean, the family's been, we've been in the business since they put the turnpike in. We had the order, that was, that's when we got started, we had the ordinary, where we put a team of horses onto the stagecoach, had people put them up overnight, and when we changed that, and we went to our house at where I live in now, and we would have 35 people standing there, and we'd only had two bathrooms at the time, and, and we had an outhouse, so it, so you've changed over the years in having people, and then built up. We bought, when we bought the Christian Center, then we picked up another motel, so it's sure, it is going to be a big problem, when you have motels and have cottages and things, and you got to have large areas for drain fields. It's going to be one of the big things, because the health department, we have had to move three times. They decided, hey, you've got, putting something else in, you need something bigger, so it, those are things that, that you have to do as you go along, depends on how much you build, if you build it all at one time, that's fine, if you got the money to do it, but we've done ours in stages. So, and what we have, we have three motel rooms, and, I mean, three motels, that was, and then we got 53 cottages, I mean, yeah, and so it got those scattered all through the mountains, I mean, they're, the cottages are as much as five miles apart, so it, we go, we go from Kriglusville all the way to the end of the road, 670, so it's scattered out through the mountains, so, you know, it depends on what you're going to do, I mean, we, we're doing the farm things, we're doing the apples, we're doing the pumpkins, and we're doing the hayrides, and all kinds of things, and we don't know what we're going to be doing this year, we're waiting on the governor to tell us what we can do, each, each phase of it has been counseled so far, and we will probably, we're counseling the Peach Day coming up, because we can't get a ruling from the governor of what we can do. I think, you know, for this year, doing, but, but, so if you've got questions, I'd be glad to try to answer some of the problems that's going to come up.
Any questions from the planning commission? Mr. Graves? The planning commission?
I can add one question.
Yes, sir.
You have, this is recent, what did you have, the place the park comes up, Sheriff's Office, and fire rescue come up, and they talk, and they generate money from that?
Yes, sir. They get, they get the money from the parking, the rescue squad, and the fire company split that up, that could, that could go anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000, they will collect on that.
You just told them one event?
One event.
Right.
So it, when they help on it, the parking, it's different groups to help them, and they get, they get the money from.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Graves, appreciate it. Anyone else like to stand up and speak? If so, please stand up, approach the mic, and identify yourself. The lady back there jumped up first.
Thank you, Chairman Jackson and Mr. Moscow, for the opportunity to represent Madison Matters.
And what is your name, please?
My name is Jane Hammond.
Thank you.
And I live in Rochelle. Madison Matters is a group of concerned citizens and taxpayers from Madison, Orange, and Green Counties. Over the past several weeks, we have requested the opportunity to dialogue with the county planner and the developer over the conditions of the S U P. We have been denied that opportunity, and trust that today, the commission at large will consider the modifications made in the five-page letter we submitted on July 9th. We respectfully ask that you consider these modifications as you deliberate tonight. We want to express our grave concern about the Crissier Resort, proposed for a farm near Rochelle. If the resort is established in a way that the developer hopes, it will represent a gross violation of the first goal of the Madison County Comprehensive Plan, to preserve the county's rural character. Moreover, the resort as proposed would cause harm to those living nearby. The resort requires the approval of a special use permit, which the board of supervisors plan to vote on at its meeting on August 5th. As of now, the S U P would allow lodging at Crissier for at least 225 people overnight. That's the same capacity as many hotels. Under the S U P, at least 60,000 square feet of new structures would be built, spa, restaurant, event center, et cetera. The S U P would allow Crissier to hold an unlimited number of private events with unlimited attendees. It would allow an unlimited number of minor private events, expected to have no more than 750 attendees, but with no strict limit. It would allow six major public events with up to 2,000 attendees, and with permission of the board of supervisors, the resort could hold more such events with an increased number of attendees. The S U P would allow outdoor amplified music to be played until midnight, at any volume 365 days of the year. The S U P would run with the land, so that any future buyer would be able to exploit its terms. With Crissier, agricultural land would be turned over to non-rural, non-agricultural pursuits, such as lodging, weddings, spa treatments, dining, corporate conferences, concerts, festivals, and so forth. Yes, the county wants to promote agritourism, but this goes too far. The S U P does not require the developer to perform any kind of environmental impact study, or to study how the resort's septic fields might affect the rapid air. The developer describes Crissier as a quote ecological retreat, that is founded on sustainability and conservation. If all that is true, then the developer should be eager to have these studies performed. If the S U P is approved in its current form, it is easy to see how Crissier would harm the people living in the surrounding area. Day after day, until midnight, they would hear music. Traffic on Route 231, a winding country road, and designated scenic byway would become congested and dangerous. We are not suggesting that the board of supervisors deny Crissier's S U P application outright. We believe that if the proper environmental studies were performed, and plans for the resort were scaled back with limits to the number and size of all events, a much earlier cutoff time to amplify outdoor music and other changes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes.
Can you wrap it up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Then it's possible that Crissier could contribute positively Madison. The supervisors should insist that conditions be included in the S U P, so that Crissier furthers the goals of the Comprehensive Plan, and promotes the well-being of all the citizens of Madison. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One minute, please, are there any, Ms. Hammond, are there any questions from the planning commission? If not, thank you very much. Next, board of supervisors, questions? All right, yes, sir, please stand up, state your name, please, and address, or location.
I can say both, my name is Robert Jiskowjak, live on 609 Scapleton Road, lot of signs from Madison Matters, even though it's in orange. I'm actually Barbara's neighbor, somebody said the best way to predict the future.
Point of order, sir.
Yes.
All right, sir. I've been to Orange County to the first class meeting, and in different maps, no balance speak.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott, I don't think we have any prohibition against that. Board of supervisors say there is no prohibition against that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, my name is Robert Juskowiak. It's a nice Irish name. So somebody said that if you want to look at predict the future, you ought to look at the past. So I thought you'd find it very interesting to look at the eight years Barbara has lived next to us as our neighbor. Especially focus on area of environmental impact, economic and economic impact as well. So I'm not sure if many people know, Barbara has planted over 1,000 trees alongside Rabbitan River to protect the river from erosion and flooding. She had implemented organic practices on her farm. She had planted some meadows trying to revitalize the the honeys and everything else in the area. So my question is, would she treat the land at Chrisir with less love and care than she has treated her land here in Somerset? And I think not. This is her farm is the nicest one in Somerset. Anybody here is welcome to drive by and see it. Now, economic impact, Barbara has put hundreds of thousands of dollars buying, purchasing agriculture machinery, equipment. She has nine employees at her farm at more than fair wages. Although some of them might question that. And my understanding is that Barbara would create up to 60 permanent jobs at her farm here in Madison County. And my question is to you all, how, what impact would 60 jobs have in communities that probably have been impacted by COVID pandemic? Where many people struggle month to month to pay for their mortgage to avoid being evicted from their homes. It's very easy for some of my neighbors to write letters where they have pensions and they have settlements and they have different financial vehicles said, what about the normal person? What about the average Joe, Madison County? Now, if not this proposal, then one must consider alternatives. If not for this, then what? Well, how about a winery with hundreds of bus drivers daily on the local roads? Would that be a better choice? What about weddings and music on the weekends from spring till Christmas? What about the housing development? Maybe 200 home sites on the property with proper planning? You do the math, multiply by two or three number of cars couple times a day, you're talking thousands of vehicles every day. All days, all year round for the years to come. So my choice is, which option would you really choose? If you think the option is this or nothing, I think you're mistaken. Think alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Gentlemen? If not, thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Next, anybody else? Anybody out in the hallway have anything to say? Please come in.
Hello, I am Chip White. I live at Greenway Farm, Madison Mills, Virginia. And thank you, members of the planning commission, members of the Board of Supervisors for providing this chance for people to speak. First, I'd like to point out a couple of issues that exist with public record on this matter. First is there are four White family members who each own separate pieces of property in the county. When we look at the public record, we keep finding one entry for one, maybe two, but not all of our entries get posted to the public record. Most recently, I was talking with Ligon about material on the public record. And he said, oh, no, I didn't post yours because I gave it to the Board of Supervisors. You know, folks, public record is public record. Why isn't this in the material that's handed out?
We all have copies.
I thought we were supposed to not interrupt. My question here is, public record is there for the public to figure out what's going on. If I send my letter by email, it's by email. The record that's handed out tonight stated material received by email, but neither of my letters are in there. There's a disconnect here. I think the Sean Breg needs to take a look at that and maybe advise you on what constitutes public record. In the minute of July 1, there's a note there that my brother testified. Well, when you listen to YouTube, it clearly states, Chip White. It does not say Bill, but you all listed it as Bill White. The record shows a very short synopsis of the statement I made. It's not consistent. I'm not sure what's happening here. Second, notification is incomplete and not always readily available. For the July 1 meeting, we heard from a neighbor that the Chrisir agenda was going to be tabled. We didn't see anything on the website. My wife called Ligon. He told her, oh, we notified PEC. Well, we're not on PEC list. There's no way we could find out. He then told my wife that, no, it would not be discussed. Well, out of curiosity, I logged in virtually that night. And sure enough, you all discussed Chrisir. There's a really big inconsistency here with including public comment and documenting what goes on. In my letters, I document all the points that we've made. I don't think I need to repeat all those here, but as you all have discussed so far, traffic, noise, water, septic, side scope, they're all critical. The key point I'd like to hear tonight is that while the developer and county both ask us to trust what's happening, when we look at the record of what's been published about what would Chrisir be, it varies all over. When we start in the early part of the discussion, it sounded like it was going to be a very small activity. This is 2019. Then in 2020, it went through several iterations, starting with the end of 2019. I'll wrap this up right now. It was going to be a hemp farm. It was going to be celebrations of hemp. Now in 2020, it's ranged from small venues to huge venues. It's not consistent. So we request that Madison take a careful look at the material that's there. If we're going to have trust, we've got to tie that trust to where it goes. Trust could go with the sup that goes to the developer. If we don't have trust, why do we want to make it something that goes with the land? And what I'll do is give, who's the secretary for this activity tonight?
We have copies of your letter and your brother's letter.
All right.
Right here, and that will be part of our record.
Can I give you a copy of what my notes were for talking tonight?
Have you submitted those via email or whatever you have?
I will do that if you prefer.
Fine.
Thank you.
Any questions from the planning commission for this gentleman? Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is William Prother and I live on Race Ground Road. And I'm one property away from there. My wife and I are here, moved recently, residents, Madison as well. We moved here from Chicago about three years ago. What brought us here, of course, is the quiet rural life. And we are really concerned about how this large-scale development will impact our quality of life for everybody in the area. Of course, there's a lot of things that have been discussed and we're concerned about the traffic and the music and the noise. And the music and the noise are mostly our concern too, from weddings, concerts, large-scale concerts. Outdoor amplified music should not be allowed to be played after 9 or 10 o'clock, period. The county should have a noise ordinance. This is only, this is not only an agricultural area where farmers need to be up at the crack of dawn, myself included. But it's also a residential area. A lot of people will be affected by this. Please pay attention to the letters written by the neighbors of Grellin Nursery. I love Grellin. I'm a brother of theirs. I think they have a wonderful business. But their neighbors have firsthand experience of living next door to a wedding venue, having to listen to music every Friday, Saturday and Sunday. It has been detrimental from what I read on their letters. Lastly, I've looked at the plans and drawings and there seems to be only one access road into the resort off of Route 231. Is this adequate for large-scale events? Do they need two entrances? There's also no mention of a service road for deliveries and for employees. I certainly hope they are not thinking of using Race Ground Road as access to the 2A service road. They have a parcel of land that connects to Race Ground Road. And I know they've been working on that area. No commercial traffic should be allowed through a residential one-lane gravel road. And I know that road could be changed, but even still, it's still should not be used for commercial deliveries, having trucks going down our road constantly. We love living here. We love the kindness of the people. It's nice to live in an area where there's still deals closed with a handshake or nowadays a fist bump. But this project is way too large in scope and will affect so many Madison County residents and neighboring communities. So please take your time, do a thorough analysis of all aspects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the planning commission for this gentleman? Not, thank you, sir. No, ma'am, if you have some comment or whatever, please stand up to the podium. There will not be questions between the audience members. Please state your name.
Fiona Tustian from Rochelle. And I think I may have missed my opportunity, but I do not know exactly what is being planned for the land. I understand that we've got what is on this list right here, but now I'm hearing about the hemp farm and other things that had been planned earlier. Are they, has the plan changed? And exactly what is glamping? Exactly what goes into a glamping home? Because I've read very different descriptions of that. It's not necessarily, you know, a tent on a wooden platform. It's much more glamorous than these days. So could some, is there some place where I can find this information out and the rest of the county doesn't know either? In fact, it was only by word of mouth that we even knew about it. So if you could let us know.
Okay, I'm sure before the evening is over, you will know. Thank you. Any questions, this lady? If not, who's next?
As you know from my previous talk.
Your name, please, for the record.
I am.
Okay.
As you know from my previous talk, my name is Amy Neal and my husband Doug Hill and I are joining landowners to the proposed commercial luxury resort. From the record, I oppose, for the record, I oppose this project in its current form. I hardly know where to start here. The special use permit application for this project has expanded to the point where it's so large and intrusive that I cannot sit by and try to be a good, quiet neighbor and get along. That is normally what I strive for, but in this case, it is simply asking too much. There's just so much at stake here. I feel it will be a bad situation for my family and my neighbors and could have far-reaching negative impacts for Madison County itself. Agritourism can be a good thing with the right controls in place, but I see little of it here. I understand the county planner and the developer are trying to work out something considered reasonable to both parties. And I appreciate that attempt, but really very little has changed. The project is so large that some chipping away here and there still leaves a totally out-of-scale, out-of-place development that will have life-changing impacts to a lot of people, to the very nature and the future of this great county. I know we've been talking about the numbers of major, minor public events and numbers of people. Certainly that's important. I've already spoken on that. But let's think about the impact of the steady stream of private events allowable every single day. Are there to be no limits? Numbers of people? No. Days of the year? No. And a weak attempt to limit the hours of amplified music coupled with no sound ordinance? Any break we can actually count on? No, none. This is not a commercially zoned property. This is not located in commercially zoned area. Is there to be no expectancy of any peace in our quiet agricultural neighborhood? With the number of lodging and employee housing units, associated buildings, too numerous to list, people and the associated glow of their lights and activities, it will seem like a small town, except that it will dwarf the area we now know as Rochelle. Again, I will reiterate my plea to consider having this special use permit follow the applicant and not the land. Or come up with some way to legally close this open-ended statement that leaves Madison County and the surrounding residents vulnerable if the situation changes with the current developer. I cannot stress the importance of this. The only way I'd start feeling like real progress was being made in the negotiations would be if most everything was at least halved, at least, preferably more. I question whether the net gain to the Madison County coffers will be realized to the degree some expect. And will it really all be worth it as we stand to lose for what we stand to lose, which is quite a lot? I know there are some good dedicated officials here tonight and I appreciate that. I have just have a hard time accepting that those of you that happen to be in charge at this moment of safeguarding our precious county will really let this happen. But then maybe I'm expecting too much. Perhaps that makes you angry.
Ms. Neal, could you wrap it up?
Please, just, I'm sorry, but that's how I'm feeling also and very, very sad. Thank you for your time.
Any questions from Ms. Neal? Neal, thank you. Anybody else? Please come in.
I'm Sheila Yonkin, the neighbor on the front part of 231 to the new proposed campsite. Everyone has iterated the noise, the traffic, you know, all of that. You guys get that. But just taking consideration, if that was next to her home, there were no guidelines. That's the only thing I'm saying. Just want some kind of guidelines with noise and number of people coming in and out. I'm not saying she can't do what she does on her land and you can't approve it. But I can feel that there should be some guidelines, some things. Those things follow, don't follow the new landowner if that comes up with it. I know they've been compared to graves. I've been up there, wonderful place, but they're off a beaten trail. 231 gets a lot of traffic there. We have bikers, riding bikes, you know, just safety issues. If we could just cut back maybe a little bit on the number of time, you know. But I'm just saying, just iteration of what everybody else has been saying, but just felt like I needed, thank you.
Any questions? Not, thank you very much. Next, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Jill Schreiner. I live at 1071 Race Ground Road. And from my understanding, the back access road for all the workers is going to be right by my home, which is like a little driveway. That doesn't bothers me as much as if you're bringing all these people in coming from Baltimore, Maryland area. You're going to be bringing in a lot of crime to Madison County, a lot of drugs. I've seen it grow. I was born and raised in Maryland. I've watched it happen. I've had family members die because of this stuff and be right by my home. My fiancee Darryl Gar works at Madison Wood right now. This peak hour of your time is going to be him getting up at 3:30 in the morning, every morning, Monday through Saturday, and working until 3:30 in the afternoon. Do we really want to hear all that? We live in a trailer. There's no soundproof. I have anxiety issues, as you can tell, coming from Baltimore. I have PTSD. I don't need all the boom booms and the vehicles coming in and out. It's, I just don't, I just don't think it'd be good for Madison if you want to keep it your safe, little quiet area. I've watched it happen. Like I said, I'm from Baltimore, Maryland, was born and raised there. Moved here two years ago and been happier than ever. And it feels like, oh, sorry, it feels like it's. And it feels like, oop, sorry, feels like it's all coming back. So I just wanted to bring the crime part up to you. And not including the COVID, we don't know when that's going to be over, and you're going to have 700-plus people right in my backyard. And I have immune system issues, and I'm sure other people do too with elderly and children. And you just, I mean, you have, just take into consideration, if you could, you know, people's feelings on how that you would, you know, you want all this traffic coming down your back road next to your home, and God knows what else they're bringing with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Hello, my name is Robert Stallard. I live in Rochelle. I've lived there for 28 years, and I live on Jack Shop Road. It's a very narrow road. My main objection is our road is already used as a shortcut to get from Somerset, Orange to Rutgersville. And so I'm a cyclist. My bicycling on our road has almost gone down to nothing because our road has gotten so dangerous. Couple places on there that if a large truck is coming by there, you have to almost stop to feel safe, to let him pass by. I know one cyclist doesn't matter, but I also know that when you're talking about development, you're talking about county government, you're talking about how can we get revenue? Counties are always looking for more ways to get revenue, and this sounds like another way to get revenue. It would be wonderful in Madison County if we could develop more ways to have revenue without it being on the backs of the citizen taxpayer. It sounds like this might be one of those things, like Graves Mountain Lodge. They give a lot back to the county. How many of us have not been to Graves Mountain Lodge and enjoyed what we can see up there and what we can do and what we? If this is going to be something like that, and it provides revenue for the county in a way that it's not harmful to its citizens, and it relieves some of the tax burden that is on its citizens now, because when you want to increase revenue in a county that discourages, you know, building and progress, how do you do that? You either raise tax assessment value so you can get more tax revenue from that for the government to function, or you raise the tax base so that we pay more taxes? There's a lot of ways to get revenue. The revenue should be the number-one thing that drives a small community. It should be community. We can't pick our neighbors. I can't pick the neighbors I have. I love my neighbors, but I didn't pick them. But when we're talking about stuff like this, we put our trust in you all when it comes to picking our neighbors. And we really count on you to be our voice. If we can't count on you to be our voice, I'm not a direct neighbor of what this is going to be happening, but if it's going to make our community better, if it's going to make the Rapidan River better, then I'm not against it. If it's going to make our community better, I'm not against this. If it's going to hurt some of the small businesses in our area because of taking away from it, I'm not for that. I live right across the street from a camp whose mission is to raise up kids. And if that camp is hurt by this camp, I'm going to be against this. But if this, this thing can bring a good thing to our community, I can't see anybody being against it. But it's, we trust you all. You are our voice. And we can't pick our neighbors. We're trusting you to pick good ones for us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Any questions? If not, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hey, Mr. David Thompson, 2544 Jack Shop Road in Rochelle. Agreed wholeheartedly with all the information that you received by email and letters from the communities or the people of our community of Rochelle and beyond. Also agree with this gentleman right here that spoke on behalf of Mrs. Miller, and that is top-notch. Everything on her farm is that way. It's well-kept. It's a place to go visit, should she have you as a guest. This is not her farm on Route 231 in Rochelle. It's a business venture. It's a business venture that's could bring developer from a different state, a different place, with a different attitude and a different mindset. Though Mrs., though Ms. Miller is one voice of that, I don't know where she stands as a majority or not, but I don't know that she would be the final say or decision-maker in this process. My greatest concern with this project is the environmental impact it's going to have. I haven't seen any impact studies or traffic studies or anything, don't know that they've been done yet. Let's take, for instance, the 225 residents. Health Department says that your house would use 150 gallons of water per occupant per day. You have 225 residents at 150 gallons per day. That's 33,750 gallons of water drawn out of the ground each and every day, just for those 225 overnight residents. That's their bathing, their washing, their laundry, everything to do with a residential piece of property. Then you add to that the other types of activities that are going on. Camping with, glamping would be a little less, camping would probably be less than that, but I think at peak, and should this property be full, which would be their desire because they're looking for return on investment plus, we could look at more than 50,000 gallons of water per day being drawn from the ground. That water has to go somewhere. It all goes into wastewater. Forty-acre drain fields are not unheard of in these days. But say that Virginia Department, well, our health department and DEQ find that that site is not suitable enough, or drain fields. And you go to treating that wastewater on-site. You add, well, I'll give you one statistic, and it's in the form of biological oxygen demand, called BOD. Need me to hurry? BOD. Household wastewater, it's 250 milliliters per liter. This is oxygen demands that it takes for the microbes to break down the waste and to process it. You add alcohol to that situation, which I believe is coming to this property, and it goes from eight to 10,000 milliliters per liter. So you run that through your wastewater treatment plant, and your effluent goes to the Rapidan River with all that oxygen, high demands of oxygen that are dumped in our river, which we very much enjoy, is a result then of green matter growing in that river, which before long will lose our fish population, a good fishery, and a very enjoyable place that is there.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Could you wrap it up?
Yes, sir, I will. You denied Sam Ostetter the opportunity to flood the Hebron Valley. I ask you to deny Barbara Miller the opportunity to flood our Rochelle community, only in a little different way, with people, with automobiles. I believe that this project will price our people out of use of this property. It will have to for return on investment, and it will bring people, as already said, from out of our community in vast numbers to be able to use this facility.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Josh Buskey. I live in Old Pratt's. It exists, it doesn't exist to anybody. It's right next to Pratt's, it's six miles north of Barbara Miller, right off of 231. I live on a bank road, and the only way in and out is by 231. I'm going to take a little different approach here. Everybody's saying that you should modify the SUV. Well, people who live out in the country live there for a specific reason. They're not like other people. They like the quiet, they like the cleanliness, they like the clean air. And I haven't, I've been here for 28 years, and I've loved every minute of it. I have been fortunate, like some of the families in this county have been here for generations. What you're trying to do is inject a cancer cell. We're zoned agricultural. There's a reason why we're agricultural. You're trying to take this cell and inject it in there. You're trying to take from Northern Virginia, Loudoun County, Fairfax, Richmond, Fredericksburg, and you're trying to inject it into our area. Now, it doesn't seem like much, but once that cell gets established, it's going to grow, and you won't be able to control it someday. So I'm just trying to take a different approach and say, I say you should deny this right at the start, because I don't see any benefit other than maybe to a few local businesses. And then like this gentleman says here, well, it could bring 60 people in and employ 60 people. Well, what about the hundreds of people that are going to have to put up with the noise, the traffic congestion, and their lives degraded because of 60 additional people? We have to think that in a bigger scope. Noise, you want to talk about noise? Where I live, I'm about six miles north of her. On some nights, I will be able to hear that noise, and so will everybody in between. I live three miles from Madison County High School. When they practice a band, it sounds like they're in my backyard. Also, Route 29, when I moved here in 1992, you could hardly hear 29. It was the exception when you heard a tractor trailer or some traffic. Now it's the rule because of the increased traffic that went up and down the road over the years with Charlottesville building up and the north-south route. Well, what do you think 231 is going to become? Right now, when I moved there, I was able to get off 231, hardly would I have to wait for any vehicles. Now I have to stop, and generally, there is car or cars that I have to wait for. Fine. But now you multiply this by hundreds of times, possibly seven days a week, or at least on a high-profile time, Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Now, my point is, this is agricultural. We're here for a specific lifestyle, and what you're trying to do is put a cancer cell in there that will grow. They're looking for a crack in the armor. They're going to come in here, they're going to promise you anything to get what they want. Over time, has been repeated anywhere you want to look, then you will start building on that and start getting more demands. And as they get more powerful economically and politically, they're going to get them. Everybody else is going to have to pay that price. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the planning commission?
Could you tell me your last name?
Buskey, it's another Irish name. Would you like me to spell it for you?
Yeah.
I won't take the mask off. All right, it's C-H-E-B-U-S-K-E, and I live on Route 714, you know, Bear's Trail Lane.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. My name is Jenny Hill Robinson, and I live in Oak Park. I have a question. So with all these possible large events on private property, and there's going to have to be fire and rescue and police to keep all these people safe, who foots that bill? I don't know. I'm hoping y'all can tell me.
I'm not here to, I'm not here to answer any questions.
Oh, no one can answer my question?
You know, have the question that goes into the record, that will be considered.
Oh, oh, so I need to email the question in?
That would probably be a good idea.
I just thought it might be a standard. I just thought I might be the only person here that doesn't know the answer. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Webber, would you please come on in?
Don syrup and Noah about that third point. And Mr. Graves can expand, but he said for a large event, and I'm talking, you know, thousand people. And again, I know that's, we're working through the event process. He said usually one call for something like that is what they would expect. So generally, large event, they didn't have, using what their experience with graves, they don't really see it as something that's necessarily going to overburden them, but I mean, there's no question that if venue that is active, they will have some calls, but he said a lot, you know, one, he would say maybe one per event, maybe if someone falls or, or something to that degree. So it has been discussed. I'm trying to quantify that. I mean, it's kind of hard to do.
Okay.
That's what he would expect for a larger event.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Rick Kane. I live at 101 Whites Lane in Rochelle. And just to follow on to the comment about the ambulance and emergency services, I know firsthand from a couple of events, it takes quite a while for one ambulance to get to our house, and we're only about a mile away from this proposed property. So, I mean, is there going to be an increase in ambulance services? I mean, are there going to be ambulances or fire trucks or their equipment added to Madison or Orange or, you know, anywhere to accommodate this facility? I mean, I find it kind of hard to believe that one, one incident, if they have, if they're having a concert, looking at lock-in, for instance, I mean, you have drug overdoses, you have, you know, criminal activity where the police are being attacked. I mean, if it's, if it's a large event and you have thousands of people, really, there's going to be one call? I really find that hard to believe. But like that, put in the record. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone down the hallway one more time? Yes, ma'am, Tracy Gardner.
Tracy Gardner, Tourism Director, lifelong resident of Madison County. We've had up to 20,000 people for Taste of the Mountains, and there is usually one call. This isn't lock-in that we're talking about. I mean, it checks every box. Sure, I'll try. My voice doesn't carry very well. Taste of the Mountains is the largest event we have in the county. It's had up to 20,000 attendees, and we have literally averaged one call for that. It's a one-day, Taste of the Mountains. Taste of the Mountains Main Street Festival downtown Madison is probably our largest one-day event, usually has had up to 20,000 people. We've had one call, and it usually does average one call. And some housekeeping for these guys, too, I think, too. This has been going on for a year and a half. I've been involved with it. Everything's been talked about. It checks off everything I've been asked to do as far as Tourism Director and bringing in economic development and clean industry. It attracts the kind of clientele that we would like, and I've been involved with the scenic byways. It's complimentary to a scenic byway. We already try to draw people to those scenic byways. We already have people coming from all over the world to visit here, hence our $36 million traveler spending for the county. Yes, it will bring in some transient occupancy tax. How much, we don't know, because things are still changing, as we all know. But we are a great place for social distancing. These people that will be coming there appreciate that more than most of us that live here do, therefore, they take better care of that facility than we normally would. And so, and all of these meetings, all of the minutes have all been on the website. They're all announced. It's madisonco.virginiaspelledout.gov. Just click on the meetings. Oh, is Fiona still here? Glamping, Rose River Farm is the number-one glamping site in Virginia, so they have luxurious yurts. So they're, it's just nicer camping, basically. It's not the same, but I'm just saying, if you drop, yeah, if you drop, it's different ones.
Excuse me, not going to get into it.
Sorry.
In the audience here.
It is on the website. Madison, yes, the whole packet is on there, and I can give you a copy as well. And I don't think, nothing's happening right away as well. It's going to be a phased process. And her reputation did precede her as far as being environmentally friendly, locally sourced foods, if she were to be serving food at a restaurant. So it's kind of hard to gauge how much at this point, but I think it's exactly what we would want for Madison. And as Legan's web had said, each process that happens, there's going to be another public hearing. There's going to be oversight, for sure. And when the events happen, the one thing I can speak to from experience, almost 20 years' experience as Tourism Director, when anyone has a big event, all of our businesses benefit. When we have Taste of the Mountains, Yoder's benefits, Tasty Freeze benefits, even though we have food there, all the other businesses, gas stations, that's where that traveler spending is coming from. So in regards to, when you drive past a Rose River, you drive past Graves, you still see it as rural. That's all I have to say.
Any questions, Ms. Gardner? Commission, thank you. Excuse me, sir. We're not going to start doing this. Right, no, 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 I'm sorry. You can ask a question later when the Board of Supervisors takes over, but we're not going to do this in this session. I'm sorry. Thank you. I asked that the Planning Commission had any questions. I explained at the beginning of the meeting how we were going to do this. I'm sorry. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Justin Champ, I'm the engineer for the project. I prepared the plan for this and I thought it would be good to speak a little to scale. There seems to be a lot of misconception about how large this is or how much development is occurring on this property. The 60,000 square feet would be a very maximum number. I think that probably got added up, assuming a, you know, 1,000 square feet per glamping site, which is much larger, probably like 500 square feet. But take into account this, scale this back a minute, and let's say, if you look at the 60,000 square feet over the 750 acres, that's 800 square feet per 10 acres. You don't tell someone that's a 10-acre lot, you only have an 800-square-foot house. That's the scale. We're talking about the maximum, the equivalent of an 800-square-foot house on a 10-acre lot. Likewise, the land that we're going to disturb would be the very most, 20,000 square feet or half an acre out of a 10-acre lot. 5% of the land. So when you hear these things, just appreciate that's the scale of development. You know, if the development here had, you know, 200 single-family houses, it would have substantially more environmental impact, traffic impact, every imaginable impact. And it's, it's not what you're trying to achieve in this county. But those are the things that can happen if these kind of businesses can operate and be part of the economy of Madison. I think the VDOT engineer brought up a good point on the traffic, understanding that this is actually a under-capacity road. There's a lot of other roads, two might put this traffic on, that these would have more of an issue. But in a capacity sense, a two-lane road like this could handle eight, 10,000 trips a day and you have 1,500. So this is not an overtaxed road, a standpoint of its design. That's why VDOT has not asked us for further traffic studies because they know the scale of development we have, it's not an impact. It won't be measurable. The environmental issues have been raised. We have a groundwater study for this site that indicates even in a drought condition, we could support up to 2,000 houses per day on this property. That's the groundwater capacity. Now, you heard some numbers tossed out about 150 gallons per house. That's a per person. That's an actual, you know, resident someone lives at. These are, people are staying there one day a week, two days a week. And they're also probably not having, you know, children there. They're bathing and things like that or washing laundry. So the actual water usage is half or less of what that projection is. So the actual water impacts, or the same token, the drain fields are also much smaller than equivalent number of houses. So all these things, I think, are being blown out of proportion to what we're trying to do, especially on 750 acres. That's the key point. We wouldn't be able to do a surface discharge, a wastewater plant. There's no more permit to those being issued. We'll have to do subsurface discharge, which means all the water we pull out of the ground goes back into the ground and it's recharged. So I think you take those things into account, we really do cover the environmental impacts. And the reason we haven't been asked for studies is because the people who look at these numbers know they're not needed. Happy to answer any questions that you would have to.
Any questions, Mr. Champ? Any commission? If not, thank you very much. Anyone else desire to speak? No comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Chris Hawk with the Piedmont Environmental Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Tourism is a great thing. It brings revenue to the county that the county doesn't have to pay for. A tourist don't put people in schools and don't require roads to be, you know, paved and maintained. However, a special use permit is the mechanism for illegal approval of activities allowed on a site associated with good tourism. The current applications mentality is really pie in the sky. There are a lot of missing conditions here and unfortunately, a man or a woman's word is not a legally binding document. A lawyer cannot, you know, back up someone's word because it is a word. It is not written down. It is not legally binding. As an environmental organization, the Piedmont Environmental Council respects many of the hypothetical objections, objectives associated with this application. However, we cannot support the current application until succinct direct restrictions and conditions are legally binding in the special use permit. I think we've heard a lot of unanswered questions this evening. The residents of this county have tried to ask them, although this is not the appropriate time. I think that should speak highly of how much information is truly missing here. And a lot of that is due to the fact that a complete application has not been submitted and, you know, three days before the prior public hearing, new information was submitted. That should have restarted a clock. The public deserves the opportunity to fully understand what they may have in their backyard. We all want that opportunity. You know, environmental studies have not been provided by the applicant at this point. The first people that deserve to understand the environmental impacts are the people in this room, in this community, not someone at VDOT or the Virginia Department of Health or Department of Environmental Quality. This application and this permit would impact this community, not someone in Richmond. So please take that into consideration. The Piedmont Environmental Council asks that you deny the application when it comes up for the public hearing in its current form and that you ask the applicant to submit a full, succinct, finalized application prior to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Any questions from the planning commission? Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, then, all the comments received tonight will be considered by the Planning Commission and its recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. We do not take this lightly. We take this very serious. We've been studying this issue for some time. It's been over, we started, I think, back in January a year ago. So this is nothing new. We've been at this a while. Anything else from the planning commission? If not, I don't think we have anything else on our agenda.
Can you just suggest to people that they look at our website for further information?
Do you like to get up?
I'm Barbara Miller. If anybody wants more information on what we're planning, please look at our webs, excuse me, website, which is sorry, cresserayfarm.com. W W W dot C R E S. Sorry. C R E S, C E R E farm dot com. And you can see what our plans are and everybody can calm down because we're not going to have any kind of crazy lock-in. We like quiet. We like peace. And we like nature. And we like having good relationships with our neighbors. We don't want to upset the community. We want to benefit the community. Everything that we've been working on for a year and a half, we want the community to be excited about, look forward to. Madison doesn't have a place where you could go and have a nice meal or meet up with friends for a drink. We're not talking about anything crazy here. We're talking about a few events a year, true. But we're not talking about 365 days a year, seven days a week craziness. It's not our plan. I don't want that and that's not what's going to happen. Furthermore, we are in the age of COVID, obviously, as I struggle with my mask. And none of this is going to happen tomorrow. It's already been, we've been working on this since January of 2019. The whole reason I bought this property was to do this development. I mean, this means a lot to me. And this is to benefit Madison County and benefit everyone who lives here. So, you know, I feel like everything that's been going around has poisoned people's minds towards this development. And that's not what we have in mind. We want, we want people to be excited about this and look forward to it. And want to bring their friends and their neighbors and say, hey, let's go check this out. Let's have some amazing experiences together that we're never going to forget. So that's, that's our intention here. You know, we're not, we're not looking to ruin the neighborhood or ruin Madison. Far from it. We want to enhance it. We want people to be able to come here and say Madison is the most beautiful place they've ever seen and experienced. And the people that live in Madison are the most welcoming, generous people they've ever met. That's our goal. So please look at our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any other comments from the planning commission? Yes, ma'am.
Sophie LaPorte, 2246 South Blue Ridge Turnpike. So I'm close to Cresseray. I just want to say that Barbara Miller's intentions are, I'm for it. I don't mind it at all. But what I'm concerned about is when the property sells and goes to someone else, what it, with broad, you need to get your special use permit exactly to what Barbara Miller wants. You have it as much detail as possible. So you know exactly what she wants. You need specific in your S U P. It's too broad because the next person that buys this property could change it. It's just, there's just too, I agree exactly to what Barbara Miller wants to do. I think it would be good for Madison County. But the S U P needs to be more specific to what she wants, like in detail, exactly what she wants.
Thank you very much. If there's no more comments from the audience and no comments from the planning commission? Okay, Mr. Fisher?
My name is Mike Fisher. I live right at this property. But a couple of things that somebody's got to pay for the school, some, something everywhere we go. I've been on this planning commission for four and a half years. And something's got to give. Everywhere we go, we go up to Cortes Mountain to do something. Don't want it there. We are trying to do something across 29. At Food Line, that's been a huge fight. The resort, the RV park is bought the health department until they're tired. I don't know. EQ, boredom and the health department, I was told. Boredom, boredom, boredom. And one of the things that we're supposed to do here is create some money for this county. Money that if you're not, if you own a couple of acres, you're going to pay through your teeth. Now, if you're on a conservation easement, it don't change too much. But the people there that bought of this property, you know, this thing here is full of, I don't know, some confirmation, good affirmation. Not always accurate. I don't know if taxes are going, they'll go down, but if they do, it'd be all right with me. The other thing I want to comment on tonight is that I love Madison. I love, you know, Virginia. I've been all over the world. But stuffing out mailboxes with flyers is not the Madison way. You might say your Madison matters, but it's not the standards that I like. You say that you're going to, you put these signs up all over the place, say Rochelle. Okay, that's fine. But you put them on people's private property. You even put them on her property and I'm sure that she didn't want them on there. It's just not the way to do it. And Madison Matters, we've been here doing this, this ordinance for the Cresseray since January of 2019. Where you been? I haven't seen you. I have other things to say. I'll wait. I just, you know, preserve, protect and enhance the national beauty, natural beauty of Madison County is our number one goal. Put up 28 houses facing the Rapidan River in Orange County. I think this would be a better alternative than that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Krieger.
I don't know whose response to these flyers. Well, Lyles, but I found one in my mailbox yesterday when I got my mail. I didn't have any information on it. I read it. Don't appreciate the fact that it was stuck in my mailbox. If I'm not mistaken, that's a federal offense. You people at Madison Matters, you have to look at the laws before you start doing these things.
Mr. Krieger, I can assure you that the postal partner is on top of it.
Anything else from the planning commission? If not, board will continue in session after we adjourn, so please don't rush off. Anything else from the planning commission? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn? Got it. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. This meeting is concluded. Thank you very much for coming. Like I said, the Board of Supervisors is still going to, the planning commission is just adjourning, not the Board of Supervisors.
I don't want you to fly this meeting back and forth. We have just a couple of comments. Roger, it'd be pretty brief. Get everybody on out here.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yes, sir. Jim, we've been on this since January of 19. So let me start off by saying that 1826, when Governor Perry Young Parker was trying to end the Shenandoah National Park, he said, and I quote, "A satisfied visitor is their best confessor." Now, you all know, especially Madison County folks, what pain that, that heart caused to these people in this county. Many of them have direct concerns. They're hurt. And look what it's done for the state of Virginia. Look what it did. This property, I will be in favor of this, providing the conditions that are wanted, that satisfy it. But this property is the perfect property in this county to do this. You've got 792 acres in the entire borough. You've got the driveway that's just a guy of two miles long. It's nine thousand feet. I've been down there a number of times. You want to wait on the road, the driveway goes down, it's in a bowl. So if nothing else, the geography of the property is going to provide some protection. So, if nothing else, the geography of the property is going to provide some protection of the noise. You've got two percent of the acres is going to be disturbed, ninety-eight percent of it is going to continue to be damaged. So, I, I'm, as well as not, what, across, ninety-eight percent is the remaining part. I would like for you all to write this down. Look at the December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, planning commission, World Doc meeting, it's still on the, it's still on the website. On page nine, she needs to end it. Page nine, list all the activities that are already by right for this property. And the only thing on there that's not by right is specifically excluded by the General Assembly in Phoenix. And thanks, great to hear from Madison, this company is very well, pointing it out to us, and so on. Ladies, go look, look at what can be done by right already, okay? On top of that, we've got this musical and entertainment festival. That is also on the website, so musical or entertainment festival, type that in on the search and go right to it. In this thing, the advocate, like Mr. Graves, I talked to Mr. Graves the other day, for the Bluegrass Festival, gets to go through this process, has to give two dollars worth, which all kinds of stuff is to buy. How many tickets it gonna sell, what's our maximum number of people that's gonna show up? How they're gonna handle fire, rescue, sheriff, all that stuff is in here and has to come through. So with that said, you know, I, I would not even be concerned about not having a six-minute thing on there because if you didn't want to get to go through this, and it didn't work out, then we'd surely turn the second down. But our word says, uh, opposed that, so I'm fine. Now, I've got, here's the condition that I would consider. I'd like to have outdoor or indoor music cut off at eleven. I, I can pass this stuff to Ligon, uh, for you all. I would like to have, and I think our authority works, a project narrative and a site content plan, we made part of the SUP. And they clear when we buckle down, that it is what we are working on, and I think Ligon will do it. I would like to see the condition that when, if we're going to sell the property, any items on this site plan, on this concept, project narrative, they're not on there right now, that are not either under instructions or in priors, be removed from the SUP. Okay, I, the unfinished plans, the spire, no, no longer part of it. Okay? I would like to see paintings prohibited from bringing their own ATVs or UTV, which is the building category, side by side, little racevans. I would like to see all outdoor lighting fixtures knocked, all of the twenty-five feet. I would like to see us require all architecture to be neutral in color and blend in with the surrounding landscape, i.e. no dead white and blue. So, and I would like to see, maintain the landscape buffer, appropriate of the property to address noise like issue, existing vegetation, maybe I would. I'd like to see us retain a fifty-foot right area and buffer along the river. I'd like to see golf carts fully being there. And I am not in favor of wishing, me, you, any of ten Ds within the SUP because, in my opinion, that would be hard to file this, this thing here. One thing I would like to see, I certainly cannot make the condition, would be, right now, we only got ninety-eight percent of the property undisturbed. The ordinance requires fifty percent. So, commit to tell us, I'll admit to not leaving eighty percent undisturbed. Not just gonna, we cannot look at this. We have set back requirements in the ordinance. If you look, I would say, A, double, road is, yeah, double. So, as far as the numbers that have been thrown around, it is great. Mr. Graves could have an event every day, maybe two, five days a year. You do it, I'll be, you can manage that. The occupancy rate of a hotel is, on the average, about seventy percent. A wedding draws typically two hundred and twenty-five people. And it would be really nice for all those two hundred and twenty-five people, people stay on the property. So you talk about three, Saturday night, and then they're gone. Otherwise, just keep rolling in, this net, you're not gonna have a lot to rent anywhere close to a hundred percent. Okay, it's, it's not gonna happen. And I wouldn't mind seeing, in there, Robert Porter saying that, Kevin, playing a role years ago. Kevin was, I was working. We can talk about some of the dollar that he built. It's, you know, the store, I lived in, you know, the grand, uh, mall. And that store was when I was maybe, or right, I was sixty-three or four. Would love to see that little store. Love to see all that cool stuff. So maybe this could be an incubator or, or something like that. So, I think that's all it seems. You want more?
Oh, I will. I don't know who this Madison Matters group is. It's not the same Madison Matters that was active in the county before because I have not seen a single person here from that group. You stuff trash, trash for most people in their mailboxes, which as Pete Elliott and Mike Fisher have said, is illegal. Steve Hoffman and several county people have reported that to the post office, and it is going to go to the federal people, not just local. So what you've done was totally against the law. I don't know who's responsible. I don't care who's responsible. But you did it, and it was wrong, and it's gonna be taken care of. The second thing is that most of you here tonight that I have seen and have spoken have moved here from somewhere. Because I recognize some people, but a lot of the people I, I don't recognize. So you've come to Madison, and you've got your little piece of heaven. And it appears that you don't want anyone else to come in and have their little piece of heaven. Barbara Miller has worked on this property, and I've never spoken to her. But I have seen what she proposes. I have heard what she proposes. I've looked at the property one day when you weren't there. It's a beautiful piece of property, and what she wants to do to me is beautiful. I don't see any problem with it. As Cardi said, there are some things that we may, may ask be changed or, um, changed somewhat. But for the most part, she's environmental friendly. She doesn't want a lock-in or a wood stock that came from my generation. She doesn't want that kind of thing down there. Why you would object and almost scream at this poor lady because she wants a business and she's gonna have a good business? Anyone in Orange County that knows where her farm is compliments her to the absolute ultimate degree of how well it's done, how well it's maintained, how nice it looks, how well she takes care of her property. She's not gonna do a sloppy job, and the county's not gonna let her do a sloppy job. The traffic, you don't know anything about traffic. I live on Route twenty-nine, and fifty thousand cars go by my house a day. And some years ago, the highway department took three and a half acres of my land. There's nothing I could do about it. So don't tell me about traffic. You don't know anything about traffic. I can tell you that now. I'm also absolutely sick and tired of PEC sticking their nose in everything that we try to do in this county. You come in here, you tell us what you want us to do, you tell us what you think we should do. You don't even, most of you don't even live in the county that with PEC. We know how to run this county. We were voted to run this county. Every one of us up here is responsible. We don't take any that's likely. As we've all stated, every one of us has known about this since two thousand and nineteen. We've gone over it and over it and over it, and we're not gonna do anything that's gonna jeopardize this county. But you can't ask us to not vote for someone's personal property rights. We can't do that. Most everything she has down there is allowed by right. And we can't just arbitrarily say, we don't care what the planning ordinance says, we're just gonna vote it out. Don't ask us to do that. I'm in favor of it. I intend to vote for it. And like Cardi says, probably with some proffers or restrictions, but I am definitely in favor of it.
So first off, I want to say, you know, when I ran, I say this a lot. When I ran, I said, I am the voice. Someone said that tonight. I'm your voice. We appreciate, I know it's intimidating. We've talked about this before. It's intimidating to get up in front of all of us, state your opinion, what you believe in, but that's what we want. You see us writing notes down. This is what this is for. We wanna hear you, whether you oppose it, whether you're, you know, for it, that's, that's what we're here for. And like she said, we are here to protect you guys. You know, we're not gonna do anything. We have no hidden agenda. I mean, to make that very clear. We don't know her. Yes, we met Clay and I actually, um, two weeks or a week ago. Clay and I met with Mr. Hill and Ms. Neal, who are the closest neighbors who have been to all the meetings. And they have real concerns. And so we, we took a day. We went and met with them. We, we listed all their concerns. And then, as soon as we were done, we went with Ms. Miller and her business partner, co-founder. So I do want to publicly just say some of the concerns and what are, what their responses were. That's okay. So one of the concerns, the electric ATVs of racing, we, that was the concern we asked. There will be no racing. There will be no trail riding. The only, there'll be electric type of golf carts. That's what they're called. They will, the, they will go straight to the property of where that person is staying. But there's, there'll be guided tours, but there will not be any trail riding, racing, anything like that. Also, I, I mean, I too, I completely agree with quiet hours. We did, that was the concern. We did talk to them about the quiet hours. They do agree that that is something that we need to have stated. The quiet hours of when all music would be shut down. There would be no noise. So she did address that. Dogs, that was another concern. Guest dogs. You know, if they came onto the neighbor's property and hurt cattle, they have steers next to them, hundreds of steers, I think, three to four hundred steers, that could damage their property. They will not allow dogs. Is that correct, Ms. Miller? They will not allow dogs. Fireworks was another one. Again, with the steers that they have on their property, this could create, you know, havoc for them and potentially hurt them. It has in the past of running through fences and tearing down their fences. Ms. Miller, and all of this, and what I'm saying, yes, people can say what they wanna say, right? But we're gonna have these conditions written down before we vote, or before I vote. Fireworks, she would have to come before us for a permit, like everyone else. But she did assure us that the fireworks would only be Fourth of July and New Year's Eve. Weddings were, were a question. Maybe there would be fireworks, you know, at every wedding. She assured us not, so that'll be also written down. Another one was campfire safety. Totally agree. We did address that as well. Let's see. Hey, am I missing something? Oh, the, um, the, the one with the music, the noise, the music venue. There's another one too. Music venue. So, I know, this, I have, this whole notebook is full of, of notes. The music venue, it is not, I heard this a couple meetings ago, that she was building a music stage. Not a music stage. It's a pavilion. So when I hear pavilion, I wanted to clarify this. Pavilion is what we have at Hoover Ridge. Correct? The pavilion is open-sided. It's a small gathering place. That is what is going. And it's actually to the left of the property. So when you drive down, we wanted to mark everything on the property. So every point we went to, we marked exactly. We, we wrote down, we marked exactly what was going on. So they're your properties to the right. This is to the left of the property, kind of in the middle, right? And probably the center of the property. And it is a bowl. That's the shape of the, the property. The other thing that was stated was the, what's the term? Not hotel. What's the term? Yeah, lodge. The lodge is not what we say, Grays Mountain Lodge. You know, they have lodge as a hotel. It's not a hotel. It is a three-sided, open area. This is not rooms. I think it's a, the wording should probably be adjusted. It's not a lodge of a hotel. This is a place where they would do, um, uh, agriculture. No, it's not even that. Yeah, it's a gathering place, kind of meeting in the middle. So if they're having events throughout or people are staying in the, the glamping sites, they're, they're to meet, they can have lessons, they're gonna do lessons on agricultural, environmental, things like that. So it's not a hotel. I think that was a misconception, that kind of raised red flags with me as well. It's a hotel. I understand everyone's concerns. That's what we're here, you know, like I said, to hear everyone's concerns. And don't hesitate. I, I know it's nerve, you're nervous. I'm nervous. While y'all are speaking, I'm nervous. But come up and talk to us. That's what we're here for. We're here for you. You are the guys that put us here. So if anything comes off harsh or mean, don't take that, we've been in this, you know, for a year and a half. So we know a lot more. So it kinda seems like we're brushing it off, but we're not. We're listening.
I know you wanna have the last word. Well, I know. I kinda feel the same way. So I'll, I'll take off of something that Charlotte said that I've heard my mother say for years, who served on the planning commission in the seventies, eighties, and it, it, it's, it's along the lines of, yeah, you find your little piece of heaven out here where we grew up, because I've lived here my whole life. I, I was born and raised in Madison. And I'm kin to all those people that were run out of the park. And you can trace me back three ways. We won't say what that says about my family tree, but on that, on that big marker at, at Kringleville. But, but yeah, you, you were really tickled to find this piece of heaven that we've always known. And you're mighty unwilling to share it. And I think Barbara Miller and what they're proposing is, is an opportunity for us to share more of it. Just like the Graves has had, have since before I knew it, because way long before I was around. But I don't wanna get personal, but somebody likened what we're, I'm intending to support this as well, given more developed conditions that were, that are coming together now. Somebody likened it to us inserting cancer into this community. And I hope Jimmy didn't register with this, but I, I thought to myself, as that was being said, I wonder if the Graves family feels like a cancer. And it pissed me off, I think, when I heard that. All right, so, and I'll quit with that, so.
Everything I said, I'm not, well, this, Doug, you asked me yesterday, said, this was quite, yeah, absolutely. The difference is though, is I'm not in a position to deny something, to say that. I've negotiated everything. I negotiate everything, everything. Um, already brought up a bunch of different firms that are thinking we will put conditions on this. Same with the apples. Any changes that come back, that's something that will be happened. Um, amplified music, public boxing for a reason. That's something we should insist on. Gentlemen in the back of the fine iris, I mean, the cashier had a question. Has any taxpayer finished? Answer is no. I was looking on. It says personal property rights law. Nobody here would like us to be able to say, or the neighbors to say, you can't do that on your property. Why they work, why they not? There's a balance time. They call the neighbors forth together. Have a cohesive type of meeting. Not unlike everybody, what it is. This lady has gone out on the way, she purchased this property. She has some rights. The idea that everybody comes out and says, oh, this is absolutely inappropriate. Yeah, we made her table. We filled her table. She definitely had my ass. Um, I was on the fourth of July. How many people did you have coming?
Oh, probably.
How many police were out there? Zero. Zero police out there. Thousand people. They had one lady that was, uh, emailed to volunteer, uh, just red reading issue. Not coping. They never wanted to address it, quite a lady. Done deal. Um, I don't think we're going to get the drugs from Baltimore to Zion. Um, agriculture is something. I, Madison County, that was in, it's the place they crashed as far as Rutgersville. Came to Madison, don't get that as hard. I remember hearing people talking about it. Oh, they're going to be crashing forests on plenty of. I drive by and I say, it's a good way to build away off in the mountains. It provides tax revenue to Madison, to Green County. Frankly, we should have done a whole one. It would have been something that would have been complimentary of providing the whole. I don't know about jobs in Denver and all of us didn't talk about jobs. There were some. People said about the housing government, they say, housing government runs businesses off. I've been on the board, I think, six years now. I don't think we've run off any, but a lot of work with them, making it work. Somebody brought up noise ordinance. We tried that. Uh, we won't try it anymore. Uh, it turns out noise ordinance comes from all pre-employment, government, festival levels. Coming to all kinds of certified devices, proposing for reliable on the county side, on the one person side. They have side effects on the dog hunting. That they're hunting dogs, you need dogs to hunt. Um, they know this room. I mean, this room would like a roll of beans or something. I think, you know, there are people that I've, I've been in Madison all the time since I got out of college. I've been here since seventy-eight. Um, there are people that I associate with, lost cattle people. There are people that were in this room that night that I would never see again. They made it on this account. Frankly, if we were past it, I don't think we were made of. What's your name? It's not mine. I will never go. I'm the family. There aren't a lot of things that have been mentioned by the right. Wineries and quarries going with very, very limited, very, very small limitations going from localities to that. Um, that's all pretty much meat to supply. There are lots of options. The party to the legal counsel output facility is something that will not transfer to the next government. And that has issues as well. I think on something that didn't test it, there is community application about something that may be responsible direction to go. We do need to break down what we are voting on. Uh, well, for Hobbs, Miller, I think, are all committed to getting us a list like that. We have seen several renditions of it. There's a big thing that will take a long time to develop. Need to know, going back to Gentlemen's comment, it's beyond the record. Um, I do think we will be reading all the emails. We've gotten lots of them. I'm going to apply them, I suppose. Or presence. It's not all of them. I understand it's a blow effect. I don't want it to affect the neighborhood. I find it ironic.
One of the leaders of this walked out, we'll be very able to say.
I did, that's disappointing. Come back. Definitely soak in everybody's comments. Appreciate everybody coming. All very much. May I be proud of this?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Let's make second discussion, and then all terms can be passed.